Okay, we're going to call a reading order previous to the pledge of allegiance. We will administer the oath of office for the commissioner. So if you'd like to rise, because I get to rise too. Did I put it right?
Right.
Okay. And I guess I get to administer it. So do you raise your, you have to raise your right hand, correct?
Yeah.
And you repeat after me. "I blame Volt.
I blame Volt.
You solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of North Dakota, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Ramsey County Commission in the city of Devils Lake, North Dakota, county of Ramsey, and state of North Dakota, according to the best of my ability. So help me God." Congratulations. And you get, you get to sign it too. Which one does he sign? You better tell me so we don't sign in the wrong places too. And I signed all of them.
Yep.
You signed out. You've got to make things official before we begin. There you are. All right. I'll sign. A motion to the chairman of the Board of President of the United States. Okay. There you go. So I guess we get to stand back up again. Attention to the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
"I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Okay, with that, we will go right into board reorganization. Let me get my, that one up here. Let's get to the listing. Got too many pages on the back this week. Okay, so try to remember, do I open up the nominations or do you have to hand each? Okay. Okay, so first order of business is board reorganization. We will open the floor for nominations for chair.
I'll nominate Commissioner Frith.
Second.
Okay. A motion and a second for Commissioner Frith. Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Any further nominations? There being no nominations, I would entertain a unanimous ballot. A motion for a unanimous ballot be cast. Motion. We have a second. We'll come for, okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. That a unanimous ballot is cast for Commissioner Frith as chairman. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same side? Motion carries. Congratulations, Commissioner Frith.
Thank you.
Do you want us to switch spots? You did too well on the camera then.
I would like to thank Chairman Lighton for his hard work this year. I love him beyond all due to go through that. Hopefully this next year is smoothly, and there is for all.
Hopefully it's a little smoother. I, I was glad to be able to help.
Thank you.
But in all honesty, I didn't do much. The staff did everything. I just, I was able to help coordinate. Without the staff, we would have been in a world of coordination as well. All righty, you want to stay, you want to stay with her?
Can you do that?
Yeah, that's fine. You coordinate.
That's fine.
That's fine. We're going to need to have him have, you want me to hand it over? What do you have?
Yep.
All right. I'll bring it over and say.
Okay, I want to thank Commissioner Lighton for being an excellent leader this past year. And I hope I can do the position justice myself. I want to thank you for your votes and your confidence. With that, we will open up the floor for nominations for vice chairman.
I'll make a motion to nominate Commissioner Wakefield as second.
The move is seconded to nominate Commissioner Wakefield as vice chairman. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? There being no other nomination, the motion was made by Commissioner Lighton, seconded by Commissioner Brown to nominate Commissioner Wakefield as vice chairman.
I would move that a unanimous ballot.
The move is seconded, a unanimous ballot. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Commissioner Wakefield.
Thank you.
Other business, we have board reassignment, portfolio reassignments. Looks like first up is auditor, human resource, VSO, emergency management for portfolios. Does that normally go to Edward, chairman?
I'll make a motion that Commissioner Frith take auditor, human resource, VSO, and emergency management.
It's been moved and seconded that we, Commissioner Frith, be appointed portfolio for auditor, human resources, VSO, and emergency management. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same side? Motion carries. Next up, we have Highway Department. Apparently that portfolio is held by Commissioner Brown, correct?
Yes. And I will.
You okay with that right now?
Yes.
Look, I'd make a co-nomination that Commissioner Lighton and Commissioner Brown remain on Highway Department.
It's been moved and seconded that Commissioner Brown and Commissioner Lighton remain as portfolio chairs for the portfolio commissioners for the Highway Department. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same side? Motion carries. Portfolio for sheriff, state's attorney, county agent.
Right now we have that split, correct?
Right now it's been split. No, I had state's attorney and county agent. Commissioner Olson had sheriff's.
State's attorney, sheriff. Yep. Can we move a step up?
We can split them up anyway, Lighton, right?
Right.
If we could just did it that way in the past, sometimes it was recent.
Well, I'd be willing to do state's attorney and county agent again. They're, they're pretty easy.
I'll take.
Well, Steve runs himself.
You got a map?
Yeah, I'll take, I'll take, well, if we're going to get five sets here. Right. Since we got, yeah, so. We're going to have to split up something so everybody has some responsibility. I'll, I'll take, I don't care. whichever one you guys want to vote on. I'll go where, I can do. I guess I've never got to do state's attorney and county agent.
I'll nominate Commissioner Lighton as state's attorney and county agent.
Motion's been made. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second to nominate Commissioner Brown as portfolio commissioner for county agent and state's attorney.
Mr. Frith, I nominate Commissioner Lighton.
Oh, Adam, great. I'm sorry.
You don't want to hear me any work, that's okay.
Well. All those in favor of Commissioner Lighton being portfolio chair for state's attorney and county agent, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same side? Want to split the sheriff, correct?
Yeah. You want to stay where you're at, Ed, or would you like to let sheriff?
Nope, you take the sheriff. I'll stay right there.
Okay. Well, then we're going to split some. I don't want to give the news. Right?
Give it to him.
Well, isn't that anything? Yeah. I'll, I'll make a motion that we put Commissioner Wakefield as chair.
The move is seconded that Commissioner Wakefield be the portfolio for the sheriff's department. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same side? Motion carries. Buildings and grounds, ITGIS, and tax director. The next portfolios, and again, these can be split up.
I can keep those. That's all. That's the headline. Oh, we got our hydrant drain now.
I'll nominate Commissioner Brown for the office.
You want to do all of them there?
Why don't you take the IT?
Well, I, I think we can, if, if nobody cares. I mean, because then I would have two. And then if we took one of those out of there and gave them to Commissioner Wakefield, he would have two, you would have two, and you would have two because super incentive schools and the treasurer, same assuming. So everybody would end up with two then other than the chair, which is usually what happens. What makes the most sense to take out of it that would? You want?
One of them.
Yeah, so you want, how about tax directors? Tax directors, put that out. I think that's it. I want the commissioner. Okay, I'll make the motion that, that we, I'll nominate Commissioner Wakefield for the tax director and then Commissioner Brown for, Brown for buildings, and grounds, and ITGIS. I made the murder easier.
The move is seconded that Commissioner Wakefield be portfolio for
Tax Director.
Director, and Commissioner Brown for buildings and grounds and ITGIS. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same side? Motion carries. And then treasurer, reporter, and superintendent of schools.
I'll make a motion that Mr. Volt be the portfolio holder for treasurer, reporter, and superintendent of schools.
I will say.
The move is seconded that Commissioner Volt be portfolio for reporter, treasurer, and superintendent of schools. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same side? Motion carries. Any other portfolio assignments? We do the board assignments later, right?
Yep, board assignments are later.
Yep. All right, the approval of the minutes.
Second.
The move been approved. Do we accept the minutes as submitted? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same side?
Yep.
Motion carries. Bills. Everybody had an opportunity to go through bills that were submitted. And do we have any additional online address? Just the law enforcement center?
Nope, we have a.
Oh.
Just the shelter management.
Oh, there you go.
It was just last minute stuff that came in around the first.
Are, are these law enforcement center ones different than what was listed or is just?
Right, it's, it's just the breakdown of everything.
I'll make a motion to approve the date.
Second.
The move is seconded that we need the bills. Will you call, please?
I'm going to figure out what I'm saying. Okay. Volt?
Yep, here.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Lighton?
Aye.
Frith?
Aye. Will the page? Financial report.
I'm going to wait until after we meet all of these bills to see where all the effects sit as far as transferring, going transfers into different accounts, like the law enforcement center and those things. So I'll have that ready on the next one so that we can take care of that before the end of the year. Otherwise, it's good to go.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve financial report. Second.
The move is seconded that we approve the financial report. That will call. Chair member. We will, will call Volt?
Brown?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Lighton?
Aye.
Volt? Frith?
Aye. Motion passes for the financial report. Approval of the agenda.
I have one thing just to add under, just under Rhonda's portion. I know we had packets, the approval of the zone agreement. We also have the, I guess this is what you sent, the shelter management.
Yes.
Okay?
Yes.
Talking about non-congregate shelter management, basically. That's what we did under Rhonda's portion.
Move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
The move is seconded to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same side? Motion carries. Next up on the agenda is Sarah. Sarah Leidy, Extension Service. Is Sarah on line with us?
I think so.
Hey, there. So I just had a update from NDSU Extension, Ramsey County. We're definitely having to do a lot of modified programming. We, just last week, we had a winter outdoor arrangement workshop. We held it virtually. We've never done that before, but we still had a lot of interest. We opened it up to 50 spots. We had so much interest, we opened it up to 60, and we ended up serving 62 people. So we sent out an instructional video to all the participants and had really good response for our winter outdoor arrangement workshop. So I'll be looking for pictures on our Facebook page of that. 4H is still going strong. We're meeting, clubs are meeting virtually or socially distanced and masked up. All 4H clubs need to have a COVID plan in our file for in-person meetings if they're doing that. And we're currently doing a community service project in the county. Clubs were able to do some tie blankets, and those are going to foster care kids this Christmas. It's kind of a joint partnership between CHI Hospital. They contacted us about it, and we ended up getting so much response from our clubs. We have 42 many, or 40 more blankets than what we actually need. So we are looking into some more options to serve more children in need. We started our registration for shooting sports today, actually, in the air rifle. We're going to be doing a very modified schedule so that we can still offer this in person, but very socially distanced. So our phones are kind of reading off the hook. It's a very popular program, and this, the shooting sports will start the first week in January. As you see in front of you, commissioners, you have some goodies from us at Extension. We have a calendar, Field of Fork. That's a kind of a program that we are, that we do through NDSU Extension. And unfortunately, we'll probably be needing masks in the future, continuing in the future. So please use that mask on us, and we'd love to have you show your support for us. And then you can see our Roundup brochures came in the mail, and we are very excited that Roundup is still happening. Unfortunately, we won't have the delicious food that we have in the, in the past, but we are able to hold this virtually. So in the brochure, it explains it all. You can, anybody can attend. We have pre-recorded videos available on our website, December 30th through January 36th. So you can go on, on our website anytime. Topics range from marketing with small grains to soil health, livestock, family and community wellness. We have a lot of topics. And again, it is free and open to anyone. And we are having one day that is live virtually, and that's Tuesday, January 5th. You can join us on Zoom webinar. And you, however, you do have to register for this event in order to receive the actual link. And a good thing, we are still able to offer continuing education units for, for those that have needed those in the past. And if you are interested in that, you can call our office to get more information on how to get those continuing education credits. So that's kind of what we've been up to. It's been pretty busy in, in the extension world. Anybody have any questions?
Any questions for Sarah?
I just want to congratulate you on managing all the events that you do manage with such good reception during the pandemic. I'm really pleased to see all the work that you guys are doing.
I got questions. Are you taking new members or are you taking new members for the shooting sports or just going to be prior?
No, we, we can take new members. So if you have not been in shooting sports prior, you can still attend our classes. Just call our office as soon as you can, just to make sure that you reserve your spot. And you have to be eight years old to participate, eight years old enough to participate.
Thank you.
Sarah, have you guys extended days for that since it was so popular or?
We are offering more days throughout the week. I believe we're offering a Sunday afternoon session, which we haven't in the past, and then two more days during the week. So just call our office for more information. Cindy Olson is our amazing guru on shooting sports. She does an amazing job getting our volunteers and everything ready for that. Kudos to her.
Anything else for Sarah? If not, thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you all for the support.
Next up, we have Crystal with Human Service. Just a bag.
I just have a couple of things, but you know, about evaluations. Pretty much all the departments have, we just have a few standard ones out. We also did a sign-off on employee handbook this year. So employees do the sign-off sheet. I do have for the commissioners that have portfolios, I do have evaluation forms for all 50 after the name. So, so you know about that. The other one is that we have two free hours from the village yet for this year because we need to get our trainings in. So we're going ahead and scheduled the COVID mental health workplace training. And that's going to be done virtually, and then if they can't make it at that time, we're also going to be able to have a recording to send out. So that was just one that they, I they recommended at this time. So, we're in focus. And the other part I have is just on COVID, so I'll try to wait for that conversation. That's all.
Any questions for Crystal? Thank you, Crystal. Brenda's going to join us at 6:00. That's a time that has to be, since it's listed on the agenda.
I gave it for designated time, so she was.
Sure.
Secret rule.
Yeah. Yeah.
Anything we could do ahead of time?
Can't.
She, she is on.
She is on?
Yeah.
Okay.
If she want to do it now.
Brenda, welcome to the Ramsey County Commissioner meeting.
Well, thank you for allowing me to attend, and I actually have some exciting news for you. And I apologize, I have to look at my other computer screen. But Candy, did you hand out the sheets with the premium breakdowns?
Yep. Yes, I did.
Okay, perfect. So at the top of the sheet, we are seeing a decrease in your general liability and your auto. That is primarily being driven because this year we are splitting out social services as of January 1st is going on to their own policy. So last year, as a total premium, we had $73,922. This year, it's going to go down to $68,218. And now something that I really want to get in front of the entire commissioners to talk about is some higher limits. Currently, you have a $2 million liability limit, and I've provided higher limits up to $10 million. I've had a conversation with North Dakota Insurance Reserve Fund, just trying to get a feel for what other cities and counties do, and it's all over the board. Of course, as your agent, I am going to recommend that you go to higher limits. As you look at the options, we're talking about a $500 increase for each additional million dollars. Again, in today's society, we see so many more lawsuits. And especially, you know, because you have a sheriff's department in there, you've got an additional risk. It seems like, especially now during COVID, our police departments, sheriff departments are just in turmoil, I feel for them. But I guess I would feel if I was doing my job if I weren't recommending these higher limits.
Brenda, can you tell us what other counties are doing?
You know, I, I did talk to North Dakota Insurance Reserve Fund, and she said it's all over the board. You know, some are at $2 million and some are up at 10. So it's, they couldn't give me a, a solid answer. It's, it's very sporadic.
Wow, this is pretty reasonable for top down level, I think.
Well, and that's, I think, you know, too, you are looking at a decrease in premium. I think it's great opportunity to make the change this year, but then also, I think, going forward, we're going to see more claims. Just, we have been in the past few years starting to see more liability claims, and that's my concern for you, is that anybody can find an attorney to sue you for pretty much anything. But I just want to make sure that you've got the appropriate coverage.
Brenda, I have one question. So the, the different options, two between, between 2 and 10 million, is that, is that a yearly cap? Is that a per occurrence? Is it, I mean, that, that dollar figure, I mean, where does that come in, I guess?
That, you mean either 2 million to 10 million?
Yes, just, is it, is it a per occurrence cap or is it a yearly cap?
I believe it is a yearly cap. I do need to double check, just because North Dakota Insurance Reserve's policy is different. I, I'm not comfortable with the answer right now. I'm being put on the spot.
It's okay. I was just curious more than anything, so.
Yeah, no, and I certainly can get the answer back to Candy first thing in the morning, just to, just that you have that information as well.
Okay, thank you. And I, I think it's reasonable to at least move it up. I don't know how far if, if everybody wants to go all the way up or not.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, $500 for a million coverage seems like a pretty reasonable. I mean, if that's what the cheapest chance you're going to get, when there's a possibility of something happening, I think you should always move it to the middle.
Do we have a do we have any recommendations or do you guys want to wait until, you know, the yearly, if it's a yearly cap or per occurrence? Or do you want to go ahead and make a decision?
Do we have until the first meeting in January and decide? Brenda?
And so your policy does renew January 1st. I would like to get this processed as soon as possible, just for the fact Jackie likes to get these bills. She has to go through the invoices and split them off between the departments. I do, I, if you do want to wait to find out if it's an occurrence or yearly cap, I fully understand. But I would prefer if you made the decision prior to the first of the year. Just so we can get the policy issued correctly right off the bounce.
We have 2 million right now.
Yep.
I can tell you a true story. In one of the counties in North Dakota, insurance reserve on hook from them, they paid so much and there were still a billion dollars in lawsuit. And that county had to take out their general fund. That is a true story. I know that for a fact.
I can tell you, I have a farmer, prior to being, being my customer, he had a farm truck pull out which is in front of a trans systems truck. He was sued for seven million. I've got another farmer went through unprotected intersection, was sued for four million. The lawsuits are getting larger and larger. So 10 years ago, this 2 million, might have been just fine in Danny. But in today's society, when we're, all we're seeing is everybody suing everybody. I think you need to consider the, the minimal cost to, to get the added protection.
Yeah, I mean, if it's, if it's $500 a year for additional million, I'd be comfortable going up to say 6 million. For another 2 grand a year, I don't think that there's anything problem with doing that. In fact, I'll make it up.
Do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, I want to go all the way to the top.
We do have a motion and a second. Blame Mr. Volks seconded that motion. Would we like to amend it, change it? We don't, not I have?
What do you think? I'm, I'm comfortable either way. I guess at the end of the day, an extra couple of thousand dollars for, I mean, are the chances of us running into this situation huge? No. But you're going to dug on, we'll be happy to put the coverage on when it does happen, if it does happen.
Like I said, when the insurance reserve on hook from that county, they had to take out their general fund. They had, they had one more insurance. They were using their insurance reserve just like this policy is. And on that lawsuit, the lower limit for the insurance reserve, the county had to take it out. Every commissioner, they're seeing, a pretty large county in this state.
Okay, I, I'm fine going all the way. I mean, whatever we want to do is fine with me. But I think it's reasonable that we should increase it, that's very reasonable.
Well, so okay, so what's that, another 2 grand on top of us, it'll be a 4 grand increase, but 10?
It'll still be left, it'll still be less than last year.
Okay, then I'll, I'll amend the motion. That would go to $10 million liability coverage. That's fine with me. Move exactly that we, we increase that to a $10 million liability?
Brenda, when the state is taking over the human services, you know, their car insurance. That's why there'll be limits on that, you know?
Well, we just did the application and we just did 2 million. You guys did 2 million. So I just, it was what we had, but I will tell you that Tower County only does a million. And so everyone else, Benson, Ramsey, Roulette, do 2 million and then Tower does one another, but yeah.
That's a car.
An auto policy?
No, that's on everything. That's on general liability for, you know, social workers harming someone or however.
The, the, the cost savings we're going to see from this at the county level, are those costs from the zone going to be passed on? Is it direct cost or direct cost to the state?
I believe they're indirect.
So let's all end up paying locally. It's just going to be managed, it's just going to be pulled out basically.
It's going to be matched and pulled out at a, at 2006 levels, song and dance, 2014, formula payment, so.
I think the, the key here is that the insurance reserve has the ability to unhook from the county. If it gets too high priced, yeah.
Then all of a sudden, our $70,000 policy is going to look really cheap and we got to go out on the open market and look for it.
Oh, I can guarantee you, if, if you didn't have the North Dakota Insurance Reserve Fund providing coverage to you, just because as of 1st of July, all of your property is now going through our agency. If I would take that policy out to the, the normal insurance market, your insurance costs would be four to five times higher than what you're paying right now.
Well, I agree with you there, yes. But then, like I said, the insurance reserve has the ability to unhook from the county when price tag gets too high for the coverage. If they're in a lawsuit, the insurance reserve can hit a limit and pull out and leave the county hanging. And then they're on their own.
So we have a motion and a second on the floor for a $10 million liability. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The party's same side. Motion carries. Brenda, do you have anything else for us?
I don't. I greatly appreciate it. I will get the policy requested and thank you for speaking out under your advisement and saying that change.
Thank you, Brenda.
Remember to have a time.
Next item up is Kevin.
Well, Brenda, we jumped over.
We jumped over on the, how can we do that?
It's easy. I'm pretty short. I guess I, I'm coming today or tonight to ask you to approve the zone plan. There were some typos in the ones originally. I don't know which one you got. I hope, hopefully you got the corrected version. I know Jeff emailed me. There's one more being a buy. So it was, I need a motion. I don't need anything signed, just that it's on record that you accepted the terms of the agreement. I know that it's 71 pages. The meat of it is actually in the first eight pages. So that's what I'm requesting today.
Move to approve. Say.
They moved in approved to approve the long range zoning agreement.
I'll just add, we, we had multiple discussions over the past couple of months now, three months probably at the zone board meetings. Everybody from the other counties after going through it, other than some typos and some, I think we spent more time determining exactly where the, where the term limits were and stuff. But there were some typos in the term limit page. Other than that, everything else was checked out really well and everybody was happy with it.
It, it wasn't tightly, so I know, I mean, there, there were things plugged in for, for our zone, so thank you.
It's quite a document. Good job. Did we vote on that yet? Do we need to vote on it?
Yep.
All, any further discussion? All in favor of approving the zoning agreement? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion carries. Thank you, Rhonda. And we have one house, one item under you. There's the shelter management process.
Yes, I, I have some numbers for you. We, we took over the shelter, social services, the human service zone took over the shelter July 1st. And since that time, we've done eight intakes, a couple of houses. Those intakes included households of four and six and three. So the total number of people who have been sheltered, that made it through the intake process have, has been 19. We've spent a total of $4,982.26. We've learned a lot. We're very, very grateful to the hotel, motel that is taking our COVID positive persons and to senior meals and service for providing great meals for them. With the, with the COVID sheltering project is for persons experiencing homelessness that have to quarantine or are positive for COVID. So with that, it, it brings a host of issues. So we have been very, very, very taxed. A great amount of time has been spent by Tommya Janat. She's been great. And myself, wading through issues with persons who do not have security, we do not have a manager. And so like I said, the grace of our motel manager, he's, we've had a lot of issues ranging from trafficking, domestic violence. We've had some overdoses. We have, public health has been great to do the, the health portion of it. And, and the human service center has been great to come in and do the human service, the mental health issues. But what we're finding across the state is, security didn't really work that well either. We, we tried some optu, youth officers. What really worked best was peer supports. They're trained in mental health first aid. They're a calming presence. They're a peer. Sometimes, you know, a, a man or a woman that, that is sitting at the, in the, at the end of the hallway. One of the, one of the rules is you can't leave your room. So that's very difficult for folks for 14 days or 10 days, depending on what they're quarantining for. And so if you smoke, that's been an issue. So we've had to ask people to leave. And then people have just not sheltered, which that is a public health risk that needs to be mitigated because they're not going anywhere. They're, they're continuing to couch up, ask friends to stay with them and they're COVID positive. I will tell you that number is pretty high and it's kind of sad, but we did have to have rules to, to keep our, our motel. So I'm proposing what other, what other cities are doing and I think a county to employ a peer support group across the state of North Dakota. There are peer supports that are employed by different entities. They have got contracts with the state of North Dakota. Ian Devils Lake Mid State Volunteer Program does the peer support group for persons who are coming out of incarceration or have difficulty with addiction issues. So we had a situation where we had a gentleman who we, we could not shelter at, at the motel without supervision. And we ended up making another arrangement with another entity, another county that helped us out that has security. But he hadn't been driven there, which was a risk to the person to drive him. So looking at that, I called Brenda Burnshu from Mid State Volunteer Program because I know she has a contract for peer supports. She was, I mean, just amazing to me, in an hour and a half had his staff for three days, 24/7. There's quite overhead. What they're paying is $1,000 a day. So you, it's, it's quite, quite amount of money. You know, 75% of that is FEMA reimbursed. The, the total cost so far has been relatively low, but we've paid for that in man hours. I didn't, I didn't add up the man hours between Tommy and I and then break that out with our salary. I, I, I have, I have an idea it would be very, very expensive because it's just, it's been a, it's been very time consuming. Very rewarding and good work and necessary work, but it would be good to have. We, we'd avoid the 2:00 AM calls, the 6:00 AM calls. If we had a peer support that was trained in mental health, it could say, hey, we provide PPE. If they, hey, you can't go out and smoke, I'll accompany you to go back in. Hey, you can't leave. What do you need? I'll call the nurse, that type of thing, you know? So I'm proposing that with our COVID CARES Act and our FEMA dollars that we, the reimbursement. And I know Candy's graciously agreed. We had originally thought that we could use another entity to do the work with FEMA. But yeah, that fell through. So we currently are having the health unit pay this money and, and we're going to reverse them because we couldn't make our motel wait till we figured out how much to, to go into the FEMA portal. So in a conversation with Candy, she agreed that she would assist with that. So we're going to try to get 75% back of the 4,000 we spent. So having said that, if we had someone quarantined for 14 days, it's a lot of money, $14,000. 75% of that would be reimbursed by FEMA. The other money would come out of our CARES Act dollars that we've gotten from the state of North Dakota that can be used from what I've read by the discretion of the commission. So that's the big ask for tonight. We can't keep it up. I'm just going to be really honest with you. It's, it's going to go and it seems like low numbers. They're very, very tall individuals that we serve, that we've been serving. The, the motel is also used by Spirit Lake Nation and they've been helpful for us. But they too are not providing security. So we've had some circuses, just to put that out there. And so I think this will alleviate some of that. When we, when you, when you ask someone to stay in a room for 12 or 14 or 10 days, it's very difficult. That's the ask for tonight. I, I know that Bismarck, there, I know, I sent information to Adam, the, the co-chair of our human service board. It's being run in various ways across the state that the COVID sheltered. We've been lucky with our numbers, to be really honest. We've been really lucky. I, I have, we've sheltered 19 individuals and we've turned that, well, we've done intake on probably 10 to 12 more than just when they heard the rules said, yeah, no. So.
Out of those 19 individuals we've sheltered, do you have any idea how many, how many days they've been? That, that, you know, just, just thought of how many days we were, we would have to man or have somebody, you know, man in the facility?
Um, it was 10 to 14.
On, on, on each of those intakes basically? So probably 80 days or something like that?
There was a couple for five days. There was a couple for.
Yeah, it all depends on, on how soon you manifest symptoms and how soon you clear and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
And then quarantine is different than isolation, obviously, the time span.
Yeah, so it's been all, all, all over the board.
How would those days drop from 14 to like 10 now?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
How would the days drop from 14 days to 10 now? I mean, working with, just working with HR.
Yeah, there's, there's CDC, the CDC guidelines drop on the quarantine time possibly?
Yeah.
I think it went down to 10 now.
And I don't know, there's four people, there are four people in there that is not even, that are not included in these numbers. They could be more. Yep, I did, I did know that it was, that there was a drop. So.
Yeah, so it'll come down to less days. Basically, I mean, I don't know, I'll chip in a little bit. The state had a program structured around this way back when the pandemic started. And then it wasn't used before July 1st very much because we all know that, you know, basically the way that had us gathered. So they dropped, they dropped it on essentially the local public health and social services or whatever and said, well, you guys figured it out. Well, then it kind of just got sat there because we didn't really need it for a while. And all of a sudden, when you needed it, it was like, oh, shoot, we should have set this up. So basically then public health staff and, and Rhonda to kind of get it structured and then they paid for it. So at some point in time, just public health is going to want to be paid back for that $400 bucks. Then we can turn back to FEMA and ask for 75% of that reimbursable. But going forward, we're going to have to have somebody there to make sure that we don't have problems with the hotel. Otherwise the hotel will lose out and then we will not have any place to move.
Yeah, and I think it's great that we're going to be doing this about six more months because the persons that we serve, citizens that we serve through this program are not going to be in the first or second tier probably of a vaccine. And so that's looking like, you want to make a guess about that August, you know, so that's another, yeah.
Yeah, I did. I, I've sat in on a couple of different Zoom calls with people from the state on it. And it's, it's kind of a fish mash of how different communities are doing it. Some of the larger cities, they're receiving so many dollars back in CARES Act that they're not even asking people for reimbursement on non-hybrid sheltering. So they're leaving 75% of the dollars on the table, which I find amazing. But that's just what they're doing. They're just taking it internally and taking the cost out. But for us, it makes sense if we're going to do something like this, obviously we're going to want to get reimbursed if we can, why wouldn't you? So the thought process the state gave us, at least in the tox I have with them, is that those CARES Act dollars that flowed back for law enforcement costs as well as jail costs, use a small portion of that to cover the costs of kind of. use a small portion of that to cover the costs of kind of to do this, basically, is what it comes out to. Because there are, and there's a possibility, I suppose, in the future, they might provide some additional assistance if a second CARES Act or whatever you want to call it comes out. There's more local assistance for the states and state and local governments. But at this point, they're basically saying, figure out how to pay for it. What it comes out to.
And and Alan's probably getting done December thirty-first, so he he wanted stuff invoiced. I hope he gets next five, four or five people that are staying invoiced by the end of December so that he can pay it. But otherwise, we'll it'll be, we'll have to pay it somehow. And I don't know what the mechanics of that would be, board, commission-wise, but we would need to pay it on the general fund, I'm guessing. And then reversed by FEMA. I don't know how that would work. But we, you know, I I guess we've asked a lot out of our motel person. I would really hate to have wait till we sit in FEMA to pay. So that would be one of the conversations. And it might be a larger conversation and on the agenda, but we're coming to the end, and I I don't see an end in sight in sheltering folks, so.
Now, what we can do is hope that we don't have a huge shift again, keeping up the costs and the cost savings, and maybe we'll save. I guess I'll make I'll make the motion to approve the shelter management project utilizing peer supports through MVP.
Quick question. Was there a was there a sunset on this, or is this sort of casual until it's no longer important? Did I miss the sunset?
I I that's a that's a copy I'll have to I'll have to fix. Commissioner Wakefield to make.
That's a.
For for us. I think it's just a copy that I got. We we pass everything around. So I'll have to, I just sent that to Adam and to Candy to send out to you. But I think we'll try to do the end of August and then, or we'll maybe do through the end of December thirty-one, twenty twenty-one, just in case. I I talked to Annette, our public health nurse, and she kind of had an idea we're going to have people that are positive all through next summer, and it's in the fall, so.
Well, I mean, it's it's something we have to reapprove. Hopefully, we don't get there, but I just I just wanted to know, you know, how long this will be effective, or I'm I'm fine with that.
I mean, I'm I'm fine with putting a timeframe on it so we can have a reapproval at some point in time. I mean, like, what, six months reasonable from, so say, January one to July one, and then we can look at it again? Or today until July one, and then look at it again?
That's fine, that's fine with me.
So are you, are we going, are is the amount, the thousand dollars per week? Or per day, excuse me?
So, I, whatever it's going to take to make it work, I guess. In our conversation or conversation earlier, I visited a lot earlier today, she said there are some places that are getting away for a little bit cheaper than that, but not much. It's pretty technical, so. Whatever MVP needs up to that thousand dollar limit, I would say to make making it.
It's asking a lot of someone to work with someone who's COVID positive and, you know, sit there all night and to staff it. To just the scheduling, to staff it, is overhead. I know when we look at, I think, probably twenty dollars an hour times twenty-four hours, the rate per day, they they're paying, but they're paying, you know, there's other overhead with payroll services and that type of thing. It it really sounds like a lot of money, but it's really not when you look at what what they're doing. Thank you.
Move consecutive that we adopt the shelter management process plan? With the sunset of July one, twenty twenty-one, will we visit at that time? Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify the same eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Motion carries. Thank you, Rhonda. Kevin? Quickly. I forget that this is the first meeting of the month, and normally it'll be longer than that.
Started off with, we had a wheel fall off, one of our moderators, and it kind of happened when we got the warranty, we were going to pay for it. But then it turned out it's not going to be a warranty job, so. They had to replace the wheel and the core bolts on the axle. The original bill was about over seventeen thousand. Had a conversation with brothers and help this raise the measure for that project, so. We got it down to eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twenty cents in places.
Couldn't that be submitted to insurance?
Um, it happened in August. I thought all that, and it just happened to happen in. So the only my only thought was that they're going to have to go there, but I consider they tried.
Did you put on new tires previous to this that were the ones where you moved through?
Yeah, we, in April, we had all the wheels off ourselves and snuck them all up. But then, like, ten days before this happened, brother had their man out doing a two hundred and fifty-hour inspection. We needed the operator or the mechanic to cut loose the oil, so.
That's unfortunate.
Did you have the wheel off?
No. So it took, the time we had it off, it took five months for it to fall off again.
It was on a brand new one, huh?
Yeah, brand new.
Was it the right old jar of glue?
Probably.
What would they want to give you to fix that?
Uh, we received eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Doesn't take much to get it on.
Do you need a motion to approve that? Oh.
Move consecutive to approve the bill for Butler for tire repair. Eight thousand, four thirty-seven, twenty, correct?
Correct.
Roll call?
Mike, Bob?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Okay, the next item, I need orange and red colors. This fall, I didn't realize the people, we put it as nice as we did, so we sold a bunch, and we're low on stock, so that's going to cost twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Ooh. Second. Move consecutive to replace culverts, seven, five, six, eighty-seven. We're paying that tonight?
No, I haven't heard anything.
See the order? Move consecutive, any further discussion? All in favor, signify the same eye?
Aye.
Full same side? Motion approved.
And the last guy I have is this White Connor wrote us a letter again that thanking us for the work that the maintenance team did on the Jewish cemetery. I hope you'll read this letter. It's about the same letter he sends every year. Kind of directed towards the guys that were willing to make this up there on the cemetery.
I hope Mr. Connor really appreciates the job that you guys do and wants to express his thanks for that. Good morning.
I'd like to thank Kevin and his crew for what you've done on the company roads.
On this fall, yeah.
If they got out and laying them before they got too rough, everybody was thinking, it's going to freeze up, but how's it going? Might need that job again.
Yeah, they're still up. Wait, that's what you did today, yeah?
Yeah, I see that.
Always has to have a good shape for the sun already.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Unfinished business, COVID nineteen discussion. Currently, there are bit-known changes. We're still open for business, but doors remain locked. I think at some point, we should maybe look at developing a plan to, at some point, reopening those doors. So I talked to Chris about that, and hopefully talk to Chris about that as well. So I think there's a lot of of safety precautions that will be taken to protect our employees and the public that we serve. So it's a matter of getting numbers down within our community and our home. And hopefully, the numbers of the colors change within the state, and maybe we can get the building back open and get business somewhat back to normal. But that's for a discussion another day. Adam's moderating a COVID nineteen business discussion tomorrow morning with the chamber.
Supposedly, supposedly. We'll see how that works.
That's tomorrow morning. I think it's available for anybody to listen in. And through devilslakemd.com is the chamber's website. If anybody wants to take part in that, that's eight-thirty in the morning. Anything, anybody have anything else concerning COVID?
And just something to think about, that in our COVID plan, we put for the beginning of the child care, we went with using that family's first coronavirus act. And that's going to actually expire until the thirty-first, and Congress is not looking like they're putting anything in the labor bill for that. But they're anticipating Biden pushing out that same type of act that would go through a whole year of next year, so they're kind of anticipating. But just something to think about, that if we do, I don't know that we we're kind of getting into the school year where we haven't had a lot of childcare issues. So I don't know what, once this goes out, unless there's somewhere for the first date, if we want to just implement that it will be open for them COVID-related absences, or we want to make them take vacation. It was only on the childcare issues that we were we implemented the policies. So just something to think about, we can knock over the next minute, you want to be more bothered or we're mad at it?
Does anyone I can give to government between?
Sure.
Anybody have anything else? Chrissy, you have anything? No.
I do have one more thing. Public Hope wanted me to mention, Annette wasn't going to be able to be at the meeting tonight, so she wanted me to mention that December testing will be on Wednesdays from nine to eleven. Well, they will not Thursdays, but on Wednesdays.
Wednesday is nine to eleven at the Leaver's South location, the Wallace location, Highway two and twenty junction. And they're low on not testing numbers. They'd like more people to be tested. So they're encouraging the public to stop out. It's a free test, so encouraging people to do so. Nine to eleven tomorrow and Wednesday following, our next two Wednesdays. Anything else under COVID discussion? Next item on the agenda, nuisance property issue.
No waiting for a legal interpretation from the city, it's turning out the city worked it out.
All right. Thank you, Perry.
Yeah.
New business, approve lease for Bayside Park Board, School, Sheriff's, House Committee.
Move consecutive. Second.
The move been approved, move consecutive to approve the leases. All in favor, signify the same eye?
Aye.
Full same sign? Motion carries. Approve joint powers agreement for human resource with Lake Region District Health. This is something that Crystal isn't working on, correct? We have the HR responsibilities for the Lake Region District Health. The move been approved, that we approve the joint powers with the Human Resources of Lake Region District Health for further discussion? All in favor, signify the same eye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Approve joint powers agreement for ESO with Benson and Allison Commies.
Move consecutive.
The move been approved or move will be approved, second. Emily, I have a second. Will we approve the joint powers for the ESO, the Benson Service Officer, with Benson and Allison Commies?
Uh, did other commies have they signed? No, I haven't heard anything, I'm afraid. I was I was just curious if they if they usually, you know, they're usually pretty good at signing, which is the question. At some point, you know, we've had it set up for what, probably two, three years now?
It's two.
No, we should, we should look at the percentage, salary split and stuff.
Would you, would we put that in place? Do we have a kind of, like, this is how many years between the times of the update? Is that a very drastic?
I don't think so.
We have an annual deal or?
I think it was, maybe it was an annual deal, and we didn't update it last year. Is that right? We just sort of just want to.
I just kind of looked at the numbers that they use and reuse, and it's kind of similar to the.
It's a breakdown.
Breakdown of costs, so.
Yeah. And 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 when we set it up, we structured it off of total total veterans, and then we divided by each county, how many veterans were possibly could be served. And then that's how we came up with the numbers. But it wouldn't hurt to probably at some point look at it. I would guess that it's, I shouldn't say on live TV here, but it's probably in our, going to move against our favor in terms of the cost. Our costs are going to escalate because we're, more people are moving in, there aren't so many, plus people in other counties. But we should, we should, for.
We kind of knew that at the time, and we were trying to find a local solution.
We should have the most, just arbitrarily, saying you pay this, or you pay this, or you pay this. So we should fable again at some point, so here for the next year. You just have to remember to put it on the checklist, look toward.
I think Bryce is here. Bryce, have you heard anything from the other commies?
I am, no, I have not. I haven't seen a budget.
Okay.
I'm sure they won't have a problem, but it's just, just get a, take a look at it again.
Any further discussion on the motion to approve the joint powers for the ESO officer? If not, all in favor, signify the same eye?
Aye.
Full same sign? Motion carries. Approval of the twenty twenty-one meeting dates. Second, third Tuesdays, first and Thursday?
They didn't run it in any holidays or anything like that? That's good. Maybe we'll show a little.
Sorry. We have a motion and a second to approve the twenty twenty-one meeting dates as printed. All those in favor, signify the same eye?
Aye.
Full same sign? Motion carries. Raffle permit will be approved. The move been approved, that we approve the raffle permit. The Children's Sportsman's Club. Further discussion? All those in favor, signify the same eye?
Aye.
Full same sign? Motion carries. Board appointments. Mr. Christiansen's been waiting patiently. Thank you to Paul for coming. You know, Paul's appointment to the Water Resource Board is up, and he indicated that he would like to continue survey on that capacity. We have no other applicants, so actually approve Mr. Christiansen.
Move consecutive. Second.
Move consecutive, approve Mr. Christiansen to the Water Resource Board. All those in favor, signify the same eye?
Aye.
Full same sign? Congratulations, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah.
Have a good night.
Yeah.
Other board appointments.
You got the list?
And we have the list.
Page, page twenty-five.
Twenty-five. Lucas, your health district is up the end of the year.
Sounds right.
Is that a commission appointed, or is that a Lake Region District Health appointed?
No, it's.
You have a choice.
It's it's ours.
It's ours?
Do you like to continue?
We will.
You jumped in quick.
Second.
Move been approved, that we approve Mr. Wakefield to serve on the District Health Board. All those in favor, signify the same eye?
Aye.
Full same sign? Motion carries. Uh, let's see. Trish Hansen, County Tuition Review Board. Trish Hansen, county tuition review board.
No response.
I wanted to ask the question, not specifically on this one, but are, are all of these boards we have on here still active?
I was going to ask the same thing.
I mean, when, when was the last time the county tuition review board met? Or is it something that we legally have to do because of state law or? It would probably be more approved to have the superintendent of schools here to tell us because I would assume that she has a portion of that as well, but.
I can see it.
I, I'm just saying, I don't recall ever seeing an office that our county tuition review board is managing. And, and what, what that, what that relates to as well.
What is it? Fifteen dash forty point two dash oh five.
Probably need to be up to a point somewhere. But since entry code.
I'm pretty sure that Trish has moved.
Yeah, as I said, Lucy.
Yeah, I think so. But you know, maybe we should contact and see if we.
Better look around.
Why don't you let me look at it because that section of the century code was repealed.
Thank you.
Repealed.
Yeah, that's no longer repealed. Tuition and what board?
County tuition review board.
Tuition review board, okay.
I'm just, I'm, no, I'm going to go look at it because I'm curious.
You want a special assessment commission? I need to know.
I would assume the other special, the special assessment commission is still necessary in case you had a township that was putting in a subdivision and then they wanted to special assess something. So that would be something that would be reasonable to have.
Uh, the next ones that look like we need to appoint somebody are they, um, the board appointments that Commissioner Olson held.
What about ground for humid, like mountain lakes?
He's at the very top.
Oh, sure. It, uh, first of the year of 2021, that's why I missed it.
And that's, that's a three-year appointment, correct?
They've changed to a three.
No, but it changes to a three.
Oh, does?
Because the first year it stays, it's out, now it's going to get three-year.
Yeah. Um, I can look, I guess I can right here.
If everything falls out.
Yeah, because we had to structure it so not everybody came off the board at the same time. So we had, there's what, eight members plus Ronda? So we put three on one year, or two on one years, three on two years, three on three years, and then everybody stayed.
Does, does the person that we put on have to be a county commissioner?
No, they do not.
Okay.
Because we, the, the century code states it has to be one county commissioner and then one, whatever, whoever, the county commissioner.
The only reason I asked is because I asked you for a direction. It was a three.
Yeah, it could be a representative, but for instance, our board is structured, our board is structured right now, so we have two county commissioners. Towner has a county commissioner as well as a state legislator. Roellet had a county commissioner and a community member that had interest in the topic and Benson had a county commissioner and a community member. So it's kind of a mix-up.
I would be interested in staying on.
No.
Because the legislators going to talk to me, they, they hear a lot of rumble from this matter.
So it's.
I just want to make sure that funding stays there.
I'd vote on that one, Brown. Second. The move has been seconded that Ed Brown continues on the state service zone. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you, Commissioner Brown.
Thank you. You probably know what commissioner I'm talking to or what legislator I'm talking to.
Uh, law enforcement center board, Commissioner Olson was a member of that. The other member is Ed Brown, he's up the first of the year as well on that.
He's always been two years. They've been together.
It's no wonder that they're not state or state.
I didn't realize.
So we need two of our members to serve on the law enforcement center board.
We can.
We can. Well, how would we do that? Isn't that in the, isn't that in the law enforcement center to violate? Or we can, we can state or state, so we don't. God, Russ, an offense illegal.
I didn't even know.
Should have asked him about a month ago. He had good answers.
I would volunteer to stay on that because it's getting easier.
I don't think so.
Eight years of hell.
And they normally meet the second Wednesday of the month, or the third Wednesday of the month.
Eight o'clock. In the morning.
Any takers? I would certainly be willing to, to sit on that.
Okay. Are we going to have any? Mr. Paul? I was, I was supporting my polls in terms of.
We don't, we don't still.
I guess, I guess I only mean to ask, you know, do you have any specific interest in any of these programs?
Whatever you guys think you would move, preferably if it'd be the meeting part already going, preferably after the, I think, if possible, not, I'll make it work with my schedule.
Well, I guess I'll nominate commissioners Brown and Fred to be the law enforcement center committees or represent.
I'll say.
The move has been seconded that Commissioner Brown and Fred fulfill the positions of law enforcement center board. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Next up is Ranci County Fair Board. Or Fall Fair Board.
That's usually an evening meeting.
That's usually an evening meeting. But, uh, I did that for a number of years and it's been a while.
I'll, I'm not, I'll make a motion that we appoint Commissioner Bolt to the board.
The move has been seconded that Commissioner Bolt fulfill the position of Ranci County Fair Board. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Mayor's Task Force for you because that's still meet. Any idea which one? Mayor's Committee or Mayor's Task Force for you?
I don't know what they're doing.
Where you can find that.
I don't. I went to school, preschool school maybe. I'd act for.
That perimeter road and the. We have that one yet?
It's technically active, but we have an perimeter road being two thousand on the commission.
And then we have.
I think it's still Ranci Brown.
Is that the same thing as road? Is that the same thing as road committee? That one?
Yeah, exactly. And, uh, the only time it really needs is if we got to change our agreement that's who's going to maintain the roads. And if the road changes, who's going to maintain it, that's all we're kind of looking for forever.
That road committee, Mark was on aye.
Like Ken said, the perimeter roads committee right now is probably you, me, and Kevin.
Late last actually, so we took over the truck from, uh, Austin City and, and the township took the, the terminal road back.
Yeah, that's right.
Last.
What township took it back?
Creole, Orange Creole.
I think you're right.
All are on that one.
All down.
I think it's still reasonable if we have a way of double deal just in case we have a proxy that's there.
Lake Access Committee, they meet Wednesday morning at the city offices, usually.
Yeah. As you say, I'll make, I'll make a motion to reappoint Commissioner Bolt to the Lake Access Committee.
Okay.
Move has been seconded that Commissioner Bolt fulfill the Lake Access Committee position. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
What do you all have here?
Uh, we do on road committee?
I don't think, I don't know if that, that road committee is the same as the perimeter road.
Mario, will they come here? Unless, we only had that when we did that, we don't know.
So, so basically what we have still is then the question on the mayor's task force, perimeter road, and then reorganization and annexation, we have to put three together.
Katie, Katie is moved, Steve's not interested.
What, what does the reorganization and annexation board do?
Um, like when the school. When a, when a school, for example, if a school were to close down, should it be a dissolution or reorganization? If property wants to be annexed into another school district, that could maybe deal with those issues. And I would.
That might be a semi-important.
It would be a very important committee.
Hey, you better keep from the gun, is that?
So do, do we want to?
Overcome that.
Last question. Kevin. I've heard that roads committee, was there a committee for, maybe remember for the gold road? Because that was a separate from.
We never met.
I think you were kind of the go-between, you tapped to the township, you tapped to us, you got it hammered out without ever having to go to the area.
We do it without the help anyways.
Well, are you, are you interested in being on this reorg again? Do you have to be on it since you're out there?
I don't have to.
Do you have?
I was just.
You are?
Yeah.
I don't want to be on.
Does Commissioner Wakefield want to be on?
Yeah, there you go. I'm not, but I'm willing to serve my community. I'll nominate Commissioner Wakefield for the.
Do we? Reorganization.
Reorganization.
I just think, I think it's good, we're going to have to have a good after order because in the next few years, we might see actually that the usage of that order exists.
Do you want to be on?
I can check with, I can check.
I was thinking it's, there should be some, someone from around that area, okay? Would be better served than me being on the board.
Are you the one behind?
Well, I think there are better people that would be more.
I need to have a look.
Well, that's the thing.
You want to?
Oh, no.
I, I think it's.
So at most, at most we're going to have to have a one, so we appoint two and have a one, is that right?
Yeah, that's kind of, I, I don't want to, that's what I was thinking, is that we should appoint at least who we feel should be appointed so that we be know of where advertising.
We should have, like, hopefully somebody come up in that area gets on.
Yeah.
You think they want to?
Yeah.
Yeah, you think you want.
It's a struggle, especially with struggle.
Okay, was that a motion?
I don't. Well, he made, he made, Ed made an original motion to nominate you. Would it be okay, Jeff, or did you accept that motion? Was there ever a second?
Was there ever a second?
I don't think there was a second.
If it's okay with you, Ed, you saw, I will second if you add candy, so we're appointing you.
Okay, I'll add to you.
Candy, I will second.
Don't you don't hit me.
And then we will nominate, or we will advertise for one.
Yeah, what committee is that?
This is for the reorganization.
Reorganization.
Is that a committee or board on here?
Yeah, it's right in the middle.
Oh, there we go.
Yeah.
All right. The move has been seconded that we nominate Commissioner Wakefield to the reorganization and advertise for one more.
Candy.
Candy.
Yeah, no.
And advertise for one more. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, perimeter road or? Road committee?
Basically done. Mayor's Task Force, perimeter road.
You wanted to stay there, the perimeter road, Kevin? That committee, you wanted to stay? I'll stay on.
Oh, oh.
You got to do it. Go ahead.
You want to?
Yeah.
I'll, I'll make a motion to appoint Commissioner Brown, Commissioner Bolt.
Say it.
The move has been seconded that we.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Brown, which provoked to the.
We never meet again, right?
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
I don't, I don't need to be on it personally.
Mario, building committee?
We don't. Yeah, we don't need to.
Is it crossed off the county tuition? Yeah, the question I'm asking, is there still a mayor's task force?
The road committee too, road cross out of that?
Well, the road committee is through the road, so taken care of.
And then Carrie.
Mayor's Task Force, we're done with that too?
I got to talk about that, yeah. Um, Carrie brought to my attention that, um, Mark was part of the courthouse security committee? Yes.
This was a committee?
It was. It was. It is.
I, I believe they put a committee together when they initially put the cameras in, like, we have to go through what we need.
I'll go ahead and do that.
I'll make a motion that we lose all the pressure.
Move has been seconded that Commissioner Fred be appointed to the courthouse security committee. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Any other committees? Did I do the? Ken, did that was it?
Yeah, I think for.
You're good?
Yeah, I did a.
Like a video.
Uh, next item on the agenda is past chairman to sign papers for CBBG, final application for the law enforcement center.
Moved and approved, say it.
Moved and seconded that we have all that. Further discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Terms is drawn, visitors and delegations. Steve, did you have anything for us?
A couple things. Um, and then I was talking, we had to change our vehicle bid. Christy tried to call me and says that the dog is not going to make the Durangoes that we were at order until February or March because they're redesigning a whole bunch of things. So we didn't sooner than that, so we changed them to the pickups, which in essence was the difference of about four hundred dollars per vehicle, per minute. So, uh, they'll be.
Water?
Yeah, so they'll be here within four, eight, eight, ten weeks except versus May. So, but we had it on record that we accepted the pickup, so we had to correct that.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
So we need to change motion to allow for pickups for.
Say it. I'm going to have to resell it. And then the other thing was, I have a.
Wait a minute. Sorry. We have a motion on the table. Um, is this one of those things that should have been on the agenda prior to getting down to visitors and delegations?
I, I'm, I was on the agenda, that's not purely, so.
Do we have an updated agenda?
I can come back.
I think it's, I think it's a small change, I guess, I don't know, probably maybe something big.
So we'd have to go back and change the.
You'd have to have the motion to give it added.
Yeah, just, yeah, the sheriff Nelson to the agenda.
Oh.
Move, seconded. Move has been seconded that Sheriff Nelson and Melissa Cheng order is on the agenda. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Now we have a motion on Florida approving the change for the Durangoes for pickups. Move has been seconded, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item, Steve.
I have, going through my budget, I've got some excess funds, uh, that are available on this current year budget that I would like to, I don't, but I'd like to start buying some of the things that we could need, uh, smaller things to say within that budget, but, you know, for example, cases, uh, that's like twenty-two hundred dollars. Uh, weapons or like pistols, like. Weapons are like, pistols are like, fifteen, eighteen hundred, uh, things like that. Um, some of the smaller items that I can maybe get out of the way and stay within my budget this year. Uh, hopefully we can save some more next year because we don't have something. I'd just like to, for approval, to go ahead and make sure I get that, get the order. An invoice is in before the cutoff, so you did the fifteenth, isn't it?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second, approximately, that's it.
Twenty-second is the very last.
Okay, the last one, okay. I've been getting quotes and other things from different places. Watch for a video, for example, like I get something on the store, and that's about thirteen thousand. I think I have about forty-seven thousand left over. I'm not going to take it anywhere near there because I don't want to be that close. I'd like to spend some of the, if I could. So I'm not asking you to spend any of it tonight. I just want to get cool and go ahead and start. I guess we need that.
Motion. Yeah. Others or tomorrow?
Uh, I don't want to get too bit. I'm giving, I'm giving bids because I'm not calling yet. But I might be able to purchase them, you know, at least the invoice. It's given the current budget, so.
Will we motion?
Yeah, we're not to allow the order.
Joey, is this another order thing that, that wasn't on our agenda?
Well, um, he's just asking, I think, do you use money that's already allotted in the budget? Be different, to go get quotes, to present.
We did discuss this on our, we did two weeks ago.
Yeah, yes.
You know, it's not something.
So, so, so we're okay?
I think we're fine since we put money in the agenda.
I just wanted to make sure you guys knew what was going on.
And you're getting quotes before we spent the money.
Yes.
Well, you're ordering it, um, because.
Well, I, I got the quotes now. I mean, I got, they just get approvals. They won't.
It's spent by the twenty-second.
Yeah, so I got approval of the quotes. Then like, once that goes, they'll generate an invoice for me and get it ordered. So then I can get the invoices here. I mean, these are reputable companies, so we're ready to, we'll take them, they're, they're all.
Is one, one, what's our spending limit again?
Two thousand.
What are spending limit, what's it going to be approved separately?
Two thousand.
Okay, two thousand. So I mean, if it's small items, I mean.
Some of these are going to be twenty-five hundred or something, you know, just over that, so.
Yeah, I mean, if it's stuff that's just barely over and as long as it's a little bit, I don't see a reason why it would be, as long as it's not paid.
You know, here's, here's an idea. I guess we should maybe use the sheriff's office, say we use, uh, Kevin in the highway department. Put you on the agenda.
We have that made, yeah, but this only one.
No, but I mean, if you want to be on, you want to do things like this, then you should probably get on the agenda, like, you know, put the sheriff. Call her, get yourself on the agenda, and then you can go down to whatever you want to do, and you don't have to. That'd be pretty simple, like, right, Kenny?
So all vote down, Steve, we put you on the agenda for the first meeting of the month?
Okay, pardon me, but next week or two weeks from now.
But two weeks from now, we're going to need to get on the twenty-second and, um.
Okay.
But first meeting of the month, we have, uh, Sheriff Nelson join us and.
Every month.
If you have a motion and a, did we get a second to that motion? Go ahead and approve the spending of the.
Did I make a motion?
Yes.
Seconded it?
Commissioner Bolt, uh, approves Sheriff Nelson to spend some of this extra, your end budgeting for, uh, supplies for extra. Thank you. Um, all, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else for visitors and delegations? If not, portfolios? Want to start with Commissioner Wakefield?
Still don't have a lot to report. I know any things, but. I don't want, it seems, seems like everything is sort of blended together with COVID and, you know, everybody's just doing the best they can, but.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes, uh, law enforcement team to be going well. I missed a meeting last month, so, uh. But visiting with Rob and. We're, I'm too old. We're managing. Kind of hectic, I guess. All the issues. Yes, it's also sort of clear out.
What did you do about it?
Uh, because the only things I have to add would be, you know, we talked about stuff around it for social services. Um, we're going to have a couple of board members there, I think. I don't know who the other counties have been going to.
Right, two?
Two. I did get their names. Um, they appointed Lori Maxson, who's a community member, and Craig Patra, who's a commissioner for the light county.
And did Toward appoint anybody else?
Their terms were not.
Their, their terms were not, okay. I couldn't remember exactly who was, we're going to have a couple of new members there. Um, I don't think there's any more, uh, uh. What else do we have yet? Well, we're going to Lake, not really crazy. We haven't been meeting as much as, as we usually do simply because. We're allowing stuff to pile up. We have to, you know, make an agenda a little bit bigger so we only meet once a month by, by, uh, my. Byway department, give us one more. Good, any else?
Commissioner Bolt will be the assistant. Welcome aboard, if you're bored, serve you. Uh, if, uh, board commissioners saw their, uh, packets, the letter from Karen Hausman. Recognizing Andy and Nathan, uh, for their outstanding work during the election process.
They're the big hand. Thank you, Andy.
Congratulations. I know they worked a moment beyond and, uh, kept all their actual work for safe and the public coming in safe and got everything. Completed in kind in a record amount of time, so congratulations and thank you and thank you, Karen Hausman, for sending that letter. Uh, for myself, airport authority, um, I don't know if anybody heard, but, uh, we lost, uh, a long time. Uh, airport manager, John Norwood passed away, um, a week ago. And, uh, unfortunately, John has just retired a long year ago, so. We go once is to, uh, mention North family and, and, uh, we're the one that's around and have awful pleasure of working with him over the last several years on airport. Other than that, um, legislative meeting, uh, North Dakota County Commissioners Association Legislative Management or Legislative Committee met this morning via Zoom. Uh, talking about some different, uh, funding issues, some different legislation that may be being proposed on the, uh, lit and legislative side of things. Coming up, uh, for the new session, if, um, if Senator Warner gets his way, we may have some. And what would be considered prairie dog funding would be, he would try to make that available to counties, cities and townships, I think, uh, July first. Um, and it appears that we would be wanting for $1.3 million. If, if that goes through as, as, uh, Senator Warner has proposed. Um, there is a ILG, um, legislative process Tuesday, December twenty-second, ten AM to eleven thirty. Um, with Kerry Trainer and Karen Burst and Donnell Cresby and, uh, the ILG team. So if you want to know what's happening at the legislature, also talk or sign up for the north Dakota counties. Dot blogspot dot com and they have a weekly blog that they send out to counties if you sign up under email. And, uh, so they send that out usually on Friday, give you the agenda for the next, uh, week for all that. And, uh, they're trying to track all the bills that pertain to counties. And there was a number of them out there, but, uh, they did a wonderful job last legislative session with that. And, uh, I would assume that they would provide another one of this service to the counties this time around as well, so. And one of the things that they're working on is a county commissioner handbook on their website. So ndcca.org is their website that they gave an update on, on their, uh, county commissioner handbook. Some of the different processes and things that county commissioners can and can't do or can and should do kind of thing. Um, but, uh, putting a lot of work into that, and, and it looks like it's going to be a good, uh, good document when it's completed. So, um, that's about all I have.
The $1.3 million that Randy, Tony.
Yep, no, that's around the county. There, there's an $80 million budget that he's looking to, for counties, um, eight mil, eighty million, four hundred thousand. And, uh, based on the twenty-year low, low road needs that was done by, uh, upper grade planes, transportation institute. So it worked up to our formula of $1.3 million, so could be available July first. We'll have to see how the session goes. I know there's differences in opinions from the governors and the, uh, legislators' standpoint and where funding has come from and where it's all going to go, so.
Don't spend it yet.
Yeah.
Don't spend it yet.
When I say where they're going to find the $80 million, I know, I know they're talking about switching over and trying to be bonding now. As well, so that, that, that affected it also to be able to, to really go that.
Right, so with that, next meeting, uh, five thirty, December twenty-second.
That was Tuesday again?
Uh, it was Tuesday. So, thank you all for attending.
You got a little soft. Are you shooting it to your head with?